No, seeing none. All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approving the planning commission meeting minutes of June 12th, 2019. Is there a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the June 12th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Abstain? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approve planning commission meetings from July 10th, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from July 10th, 2019.
I'm not the mayor, but I'll
I'm sorry.
take your motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Bad habits.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. No? Abstain? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Pipers Preserve grading permit renewal application southeast of Imperial Avenue and Highway 97 intersection. I'll skip reading out the PID numbers. So for those in the audience watching, this is the grading permit to south of 97. And the process that we'll go through tonight is we'll have staff present the application renewal. We'll bring it back to the commission to ask questions of them. It isn't on the agenda to hold a public hearing, but traditionally our planning commission is welcome to hear from the public if there's anyone that has some words. And so unless there's objection up here, I will allow that. And then we'll bring it back to the commission to make a decision. So Donovan, you want to kick us off?
Sure. Can I get some video, please? Chair members of the planning commission like to present the grading permit renewal for the, let's call it Pipers Preserve. This was, the original permit was approved in June of 2018, and, I'm sorry, July, and with the expectation that it, we would be back here a year later. Here on your screens is the site. It consists of two parcels with some 97 frontage, but accesses through Imperial. The, the project did involve removal quite a bit of soil. It was about a ridgeline of about 150,000 cubic yards of soil that the grading plan has been removed from the site. They estimate, the project team estimates about half that soil has been removed. And the, the request now is to extend it to the end of October of 2020 to finish the work they started. Also, one, one piece of this was that this was expected to be, you know, preparation for the site for subdivision. And even there was something of a concept subdivision. It was part of the original packet. However, upon further review, I, I realized that the PUD, Planning and Development, cannot be used in the rural residential zoning district in which this property is located. And also, there, I mean, it was never, the city was not approving a complete plan with that, but it was also a piece of that was to set up where, where there are tree replacement areas to comply with woodland preservation regulations. So after walking the site and looking at what trees do meet, are significant trees that are six feet or larger, not dying, and are in certain areas that are outside the boundaries of a house lot and septic areas, we, we did identify 90 trees that would be replaced, you know, after the grading activities were completed. And so, and that all, that, that didn't occur after the planning commission approval. And they started work. It's something, looks something like a lunar landscape at the moment, but any impacts, there have been rarely impacts on the wetlands on the site. In your, in the memo, you can see where Comfort Lake Watershed District, Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District, which has the sediment erosion control permit authority on this site, you know, reports that the, the applicant's been extremely responsive and involved with the site and has taken care of issues when they have arisen. And so currently, there is a, with, with, with the, with the other grading permit, there's a letter of credit for $50,000 for any sort of site restoration to ensure that, if there's any big issues that the site could be taken care of. With this, though, we're looking at a, additional letter of credit for tree planting to ensure that that occurs by the end of October 2020. So at this point, the city staff does recommend approval of the renewal application for the site with the conditions listed, which include all comments and concerns of the city engineer shall be met during the term of the grading permit, as well as the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District permit requirements must be met. A new development agreement shall be prepared by the city attorney for execution. A total of $80,000 of financial guarantees shall be submitted, with expiration date no sooner than December 31st, 2020. And that, all grading, seeding, and tree planting shall occur by October 30th, 2020. At this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Questions? You had your hand up first.
I didn't have my hand up at all.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did.
No, that was for Ryan.
Commissioner Young.
Donovan, do you think that if they finish their grading October 30th and their dirt removal by October 30th of next year, that they will know that they have sufficient tree viability and seed viability in the area by December 30th to meet our requirements?
There often is a, like a warranty period for trees, but, but in this case, I believe that, given the nature of the site, that, you know, the smaller trees would work, and those have a much higher chance of surviving than larger, larger trees.
What is the requirement of our woodland ordinance for tree replacement? I mean, are, are they, can they do the, you know, the yearling?
No, I mean, they're, you know, two-inch trees. There's, there's a full schedule.
Two-inch caliper?
I'm sorry?
A two-inch caliper?
Yes.
Are there comments? Questions, staff?
You have a question for staff. When we reviewed this last year, we were a little bit concerned about traffic, and especially about traffic entering Highway 97. Has there been any issues regarding that, or has it gone well?
I've not heard of any issues with that. Maybe some residents here can, can speak to that. I, and, and we did, you know, I asked the, you know, the project team if they had issues. You know, we've had, you know, Comfort Lake Forest Lake, you know, and given the amount of truck traffic, I thought I would hear more, or even show more wear on the road, because we did a full documentation, videoing of the road prior to initiation of grading activities. But really have not, you know, that doesn't seem like that's arisen as a problem. In your, in your, at your seats, I did receive an email from a resident who had a noise complaint, and so I alerted them to what, yeah, 7:00 AM is the, you know, you know, no construction activities before 7:00 AM, and, you know, even sent an email to the project team reminding them of that.
It's good. I mean, I would expect there to be some concerns about noise complaint in the residential area, but the, we were particularly concerned about potential traffic moving, move, movement to the east up the grade with no acceleration lane. And, but sounds like it's worked out, and there hasn't been any major accidents or issues. Good.
Right.
Donovan, I have a, a question. So the, the letter that we did get from the one neighbor on this project, I did ask a question. So in full disclosure, I asked a question if the, what we'll say, resident, I don't know the complainant, would be correct. Are you supportive that 7:00 AM be the work starting point, or should it be modified, or do you suggest different enforcement? And he did respond to me that he has no issue with it starting at 7:00 AM, only when it starts before that, that he wishes there was some enforcement. So Donovan, can you go over, I understand that there's not ample staff to enforce a development or grading such as this on a daily basis, but can you outline what the process is? Is it only complaint-driven, or do you go by randomly?
In this case, I mean, it pretty much has to be complaint-driven at 7:00 AM, and that's, and really where, and this is something I did, I did send an email back to the resident saying that, you know, properly, you should, and this is kind of, you know, my general response with noise complaints is, I mean, I can write letters, you know, but it's the most effective way to do it is alert the police. Just pick up the phone, call 911, they're there, and that you can call, it's not considered emergency, but you still can call 911. And, you know, responding officer can relay the message probably much better than I can. And this is something that's, you know, every, every construction team knows that 7:00 AM is the start time. 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM are construction hours. And obviously, workers can be on the site. They can be lubricating machinery and, you know, doing any, you know, summertime, you could do some shovel work or whatever, but not starting up material, construction equipment. And, you know, also, there's just the size of the site. I mean, it's, it's kind of like the size of the site looks big, like maybe you could start a machine and not think it impacts people, but it's also, there's a, I think, a real expectation that you're in the rural area, and noise like that does carry. And so there's a, there's a, you know, essential, you know, tension there. But I think the best way to resolve, and I, I think the, the applicant, the residence, you know, email just kind of says that seven's fine, but not before seven.
And so an idling truck that can be heard in a neighbor's property would not be considered reasonable?
I think a pickup truck, it would be different than if it was.
A semi?
Yeah.
Are there other questions of staff? Does the applicant, is the applicant here? Did you have anything to add, or want to go up to the podium? Can you join us at the podium? So those watching from home, I know there's at least one out there can hear you.
My name is Tony Fradlin. I'm with Fradlin Companies out of St. Paul, and we're the ones doing earthwork out on the site and removing the soil. We, we get into situations with the, the timing and the hours all over the, the state of Minnesota. And, and it is, we do try and do adhere to everybody's policies. Sometimes you get into trouble, you hire trucks, you do whatever, and you tell them it's 7:00 o'clock, and they show up at 10:02. You can only say so much. I would say that might have been a little bit of, better, bigger issue when we first started the project. Now we've opened it up, like Donovan had said, we've opened it up. So if the trucks do pull in there early, they pull in and they shut them off. So it shouldn't be that big of a noise problem now. The biggest problem with the noise on heavy equipment is the backup alarms. That's what really gets people going, because they are annoying. They're there for a reason. They're for everybody's safety, but they do get annoying. Most of my guys, they all adhere to that. Once in a while, we have to move a piece of equipment in. That sometimes that happens a little bit earlier. We just got to reinforce the rules with our lowboy guys to make sure they adhere to the, the rules. Does that help at all?
It does. Was there anything else you had?
No.
All right. Was there any resident that wanted to speak on the topic? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the planning commission for consideration of a motion. Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chairman, I am going to move approval of the renewal of the grading permit with recommendations one, two, three, as is, with a change to recommendation number four with the expiration date of the required financial guarantees to be July 31st, 2020, so that the city has ample time to make sure that the trees and the seeded vegetation not only make it through the winter, or make it through the spring and early summer, and leaving recommendation five alone.
There, that was a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. I want to ask you one point of clarification before we get into discussion. You did say to change the date to July 31st of 2020, which would be six months in advance of the staffing date.
Thank you for the catch. 2021.
I thought that was your intent.
Yes, thank you.
Can I ask another clarifying question for that motion? Are you referring to, there's separate, there's two separate, there's one, the $50,000 grading surety, and then the $30,000 landscaping surety. Do you want those dates?
The entire $80,000 to be July 31st, 2021.
Okay.
That way, if we have significant erosion, we still have a, a grading guarantee.
So you're seeking to amend the motion? Is that seconded?
Second.
All right. Is there discussion? No one? All right. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Good luck with the plan and keep working with the neighbors. I did see some positive comments online from some of the neighbors that you were, had their kids out and some of the trucks and stuff. So I think, I think that's pretty awesome and noteworthy to mention. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is the conditional use permit for 986210th Street Court, adjacent non-repairing lot accessory structure. This will work similar to the, the last agenda item, except it is an official public hearing, so we have to allow you to speak, and we certainly welcome you to come up and speak. But staff will do their presentation first, and then we'll allow the applicant with the commissioners in between, and then a final decision by us. Donovan?
Sure, thank you. Chair members of the planning commission, I'd like to present the conditional use permit application to build a, a accessory structure on a non-repairing lot without a principal structure. The applicants are Carlos and Abigail Jimenez, and they're represented by
Steve Day.
Steve Day, who, who will, of course, give a chance to speak if he pleases. And the property is located on the southeast corner of Third Lake, on a small road, 210th Street Court. The Jimenez's house is here, at 9680. The subject property is here across the street within 100 feet proximity of the house lot. And what they proposed is a, makes a single-story shed for their, to store their house and, I'm sorry, their cars and a boat. Size of it, 792 square feet, which is below the 8,000 square foot threshold, is set by the CUP standards, when the zoning code was changed to allow this type of improvement. What's interesting about this one is that this is something of a completion of the original house rehabilitation that the owners undertook, in which they did not place a, they did redevelop the property, but didn't create a, any kind of enclosed garage space, which the code requires. So the city actually collected a $2,000 escrow to provide leverage for that eventual construction of the, of the house lot on this side of the street. And so that's what they're proposing to do now. The proposed structure does meet the structure setbacks for side and front, as well as a well setback. There was some concern about a, you know, forced sewer main that comes up here, but I confirm with Public Works that it's on the house lot side, side, and so it is not near this proposed construction. The maximum, the 10-foot sidewall meets code requirements for height. The proposed impervious surface is 9.4%, so that, that meets code requirements. The, there is currently some gravel in a shed, you know, on the property. So that shed will be removed, and, you know, it's condition of, staff condition of approval, all gravel, which is not conforming in this zoning district for, for parking or car storage, I mean, car access, you know, that needs to be removed prior to construction. The, of course, let me show you that. I'll clear the survey here. The, there are wetlands that the structure is at least 20 feet away from. There's some concern around, this is something that predates this proposal, working with the owner and conversations with Public Works around the, you know, water, stormwater drainage in this area. I mean, currently, it's a little bit of a drain tile that the owner has, has installed along here to get the water to drain into this plaza, city right-of-way. It's not draining really well. I think it's, and obviously, Carlos Jimenez, the applicant, has expressed his desire to kind of, well, you know, if approved, to get some, construction equipments on, on site, actually try to clear this out some. But there's some concerns about wetlands there. I think we'll be able to try and improve things, but I think the site will be improved by professional installation of, of drain tile there, as well as, but the, the survey that was submitted doesn't give enough elevations to really show water flow and doesn't really function as a drainage plan. So that needs to be, you know, spot elevations need to be obtained to provide a better, clearer picture of what, how the water's draining, and, and then also what the proposed drainage to alleviate some of these concerns. Currently, the owner has, as well as, you know, to try to improve the situation with the, with the new impervious surface that's located here. And so, the staff does recommend approval of the, the CUP application with the, you know, on the condition that the grading plan is, is approved by the city engineer. Of course, stormwater runoff doesn't impact other properties. Removal of the gravel parking driveway surfaces on the property, and the driveway, new driveway must be at least five feet from the site property line on that kind of northeastern corner. And that, all required permits from Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District shall be obtained prior to initiation of construction activities. And at this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Miller?
Donovan, is there a way you can pull up the drawing of the garage? I can't get it to fit on our screen here.
You mean that, just the elevation?
Yes, I'm sorry.
This one?
Yes. And what are those sidewalls? I'm trying to read it, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I think, yeah, the clearest, one clear dimension is, right?
It's a 50 by 50 pad, but what's, what's the size of the garage? I think it's 24 by, I can see that, but I'm just wondering what the sidewall.
Yeah, 24 by 30 total, but it's
30 by 30?
There's a porch space there.
Yep.
So it's not enclosed. Let me get you that dimension.
So they're 13 feet to center, eight foot, okay. And this is the plan that's been submitted?
Sorry?
This is the plan that's been submitted?
Yeah, it's, it's on here, because I did, I didn't, I didn't see initially myself. Where's that? Yeah, here we go. So that's from the, the floor to the, this roof, remember, here.
Thank you.
Are there questions of staff?
Is this your house, or is this a cabin?
This is a recreational home for the Jimenezes.
Are there questions of staff? Does the applicant's representative want to say anything additional? You don't have to, but if you want to.
No, I was just here in case there was any questions.
There may be.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to commend the applicants on your exhibits that you submitted with your application. I think it was a very clear presentation of the project, and I, I thank you for your detail in your presentation.
You can take credit for that if you want.
Me and my team here.
All right. So if there was no other questions of the applicant, we'll open up the public hearing. So is there any member of the public that would like to speak on the issue? If you could come up to the podium.
No, just here, on, on, not even on behalf, but I live right next door. Ben Stevens, 210th Street Court North, 9670 is, is the address. But I was just here to talk to Carlos about this project since, since he moved in, basically, and we're just here to see if there's any issue. It's on a piece of property that's facing woodlands. It's already cleared out. I, I think the garage, in some ways, would probably add appeal to the property. And that's the main reason we're here, is to, to state that it's a dead end. We own the three parcels past his property on the dead end, and don't really see any type of issue as long as he's doing things to code, so.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think this is exactly why we adopted this ordinance the way we have, for a situation like this. I, I think it's, this is just the type of application that we anticipated with the ordinance that we prepared. I, I'd make a motion to approve the, the request for the conditional use permit, subject to the five conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
There's a motion and a second? Is there discussion? Ms. Young? Commissioner Young?
Two, two things quickly. Donovan, in the conditions, I don't see the requirement to take down and not replace the shed that's on there. Was that your intention?
It is, I think it's, it's my intention, I mean, they state that they, they do plan to remove it. And so
And not rebuild it again?
Yes.
Okay. And the second, do either you or the chairman want to talk about the neighborhood meeting that did occur?
Oh.
I certainly can summarize it. There was one neighbor other than the one that spoke at the public hearing tonight, also completely in support of the project, and then it was relatively small talk. Commissioner Young and myself attended with Donovan, and then the applicants, the couple. Does that summarize it, Donovan?
Yeah.
There wasn't much, there was a summary in the, in the staff report, and so that's why I skipped over that earlier.
Is, is the new driveway, is that going to be concrete? Or like a class V?
It's, it's, no, class V is not allowed, and that's why I made, you know, it's currently gravel there. The survey does show, just, let me, it's, I believe it's going to be by 2 minutes. It's, I believe it's going to be by two minutes. I don't.
Is our code, is it 10 feet from the property line, our, our code, or is it here where it's five feet?
Oh, it's, it's for a driveway? It needs to be at least five feet from the property line?
Five feet?
Yeah, so it's basically just, I'm not sure what this dimension is, but might be shifting that over or else just, you know, straighten it out.
Mr. Chairman, I would certainly amend my motion to add a condition number six that would require, clearly that would require the applicant to remove the existing shed prior to construction of the new shed.
Do you have some language for the amendment they'd like to add specifically?
And not replace.
Condition number six, that the applicant be required to remove the existing accessory structure on the subject property prior to the construction of the new building.
I forget who seconded that.
I would second that, too.
Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded along with the amendment. Is there a further discussion? I'll call the question then. All those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carries. Tell them good luck on their project.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our other business. What other business do you have for us, Donovan?
I, nothing, no other business, really. Happy we have, we have a planning commission and hopefully we'll get some more going. Still some, there's some, still some things brewing, but no formal applications. So we won't have a meeting in, you know, on, I'm sorry, but we have a meeting. No, we won't have a meeting on October 9th, but we'll see about the end of October.
All right, thank you. Karen, did you have any updates for us?
I do not.
Our member Gerard? We're always willing to hear you.
Thank you very much. I have a kind of a poor memory, so I can't remember what all has come before the council. Everything from you guys has come as, on the consent agenda. For the most part, it's all passed. No issues at all. I believe there was one that had to come before us and it was quickly discussed. You guys did a great job on it, so no issue. I do want to invite you, there is going to be a couple of budget meetings, a presentation on the city budget for the year. It's on October, Thursday, October 3rd, 6:00 to 7:30 here. And then for those of you guys who can't stay up till late, Friday, the 4th, from 11:30 to 1:00. They will give the presentation if you missed a riveting city council meeting and then there'll be time to answer any questions that you may have. Of interest for, for you guys is, there's been a lot of discussion, especially from Commissioner Keane, that we'd like to really see a code enforcement position that currently is in the budget for next year, probably a half-year type of hire. So that's one of the issues. The other is, there is a bonding proposal to pick up the pace on our road repair and replacement. We just get franchise fees now, so we steadily are falling behind. So that's another piece of the puzzle. And lastly, they, they plan to refinance the, the building we're in, do, and it all, refinance and the roads is really due to the really low interest rates on the bonds right now. So it's a prudent move. I don't think we'll ever get money cheaper than we can get it now. So that's all I have for tonight. I can answer any questions. Mr. Keane?
Is this building paid off?
Am I six feet tall?
Well, they're going to refinance it or something. Maybe they're getting close to the end.
You think we're pulling our equity out?
Who knows?
No, but it's kind of a convoluted finance deal through the EDA currently, and so that will be removed. It would just be a, a bond and it would be a straightforward deal then. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other business from commissioners? Commissioner Young?
Donovan, is the comp plan finalized and adopted by the council? And when shall we start our zoning code amendments?
No, and I don't know. I do not, the only one who wants to see that completion of that and reinitiation of next steps.
This, this last, this last group that came before us tonight, that's exactly what we've been promoting over the last couple of years to get involved in, so that people can, who have property and other property across the street, to get them involved in, you know, making their neighborhood better. And that was a good example of it tonight. So we've had a few lately doing that and it seems to be working pretty well.
Two for two on passing. I agree with you. I think it's, I think it was a good change in our, in our policy. I like that it goes through this process versus, there's rubber stamped over at City Hall here by staff. So I think it is a good process to come to us.
Or it allows the neighbors to comment on it, too, you know? So, yeah, it is a good process.
Is there any other business? Then I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's non-debatable. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? No? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:36.